Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Fernie City Council held at 6:30 PM on February 18th, 2025. Kisu Kukit, we acknowledge the city of Fernie is located when within Kukana Makas, the unceded territory of Yakit Atnukleat First Nation. We recognize that we live and work within their vast lands. Akana Hunick are from Yakad Atnukleat and are members of the Tanaa speaking peoples of British Columbia, Idaho and Montana. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a mover and a seconder for the following staff recommendation that the agenda of the February 18th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted. Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Audia Kelly. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. I'll now ask for a mover and a seconder for the following staff recommendation that the minutes of the January 21st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted. Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. I'll now open the floor to public participation and invite the public in attendance or participating electronically who wish to comment on items listed on the meeting agenda in accordance with Section 3.7.3 of the procedure by law to address council except speakers must not address council regarding a matter for which a public hearing must be held or has been held pursuant to the Local Government Act prior to council's consideration of the matter or adoption of the bylaw. Speakers must not address council regarding a permit for which public notice must be given or has been given pursuant to the Local Government Act prior to council's consideration of issuance of the permit, and a speaker may only address council for a maximum of three minutes. And so I'll look to the gallery and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak at this juncture. And seeing none, I'll look to Ms. Rhodes if anybody online is indicated. Seeing none, I think it will continue to item 6.1, delegation from our local RCMP. Report from Staff Sergeant Nielsen. Welcome.
Remember to press the button this time, so I'm all in good form. Thank you. Thank you for having us here again. It's a pleasure to speak with you. So we're just reporting on the, on the 2024, 2025 quarter three reports there. This is obviously a new forum for, for me. This is something that Michael had brought forward, and I believe possibly somebody else had brought forward to us. And Christina Bilski, our, our, you know, Sip employee had gone through that and developed it for your purposes. So it's a little bit changed from what you've seen before. So again, obviously work in progress likely, but she did an excellent job and put a lot of time into this. So just want to recognize her efforts for this, for you to help get a bit more information. So as you can see with the, we've got on this page here, generally speaking, across the calls for service for, for the entire area, we have a more further breakdown on the next page in regards to the impact of the city of Fernie. Our call levels are consistent with previous years throughout the entire zone. The RDEK areas has increased slightly, but nothing too dramatic. Again, not too many shocking figures here. You can see the breakdown with the, the BNE businesses and how those relevant to each area, meaning that we're still dealing with those unfounded calls, which are those alarm calls we get. So those are more broken down for you, and those are also included in residential numbers. And then we also had a, had the BNE other, which are like sheds and garages type thing. So there was a publicized media release we did, for example, in Sparwood regarding a break and enter into a locker that was held by one of the Amazon distributors. And that's the report there you see in that one with the founded event. That is the one founded event I believe we've had in the quarter. Except the vehicles are fairly consistent, except the bikes are, again, fortunately relatively a non-issue for us. And you also have your motor vehicle incidents, again, very consistent across the board. Lots of reports of collisions under $10,000. Those basically relate to our form completions that we have with the various insurance companies, in our case particularly ICBC. And of course, we had the one fatal accident which occurred just north of Sparwood as well. Impair investigations continue to be a strong point for the detachment. There's a further breakdown on additional pages. Bylaws and noise are pretty consistent. Again, not too many difficulties there. You could call it a slight increase, I guess, in cause disturbance files or like issues with some of the, the downtown area within Fernie is kind of slightly increased slightly. I wouldn't call it a dramatic increase by any case, but there have been a couple of cases recently, even in the current quarter where there's been people that have been held or we had to deal with issues. And there's other concerns with that too as well, which I'll dive into a bit later. Frauds are fairly consistent across the board. Mental health work continues to be not so much a concern, but certainly we're working with our partnerships in interior health to try and improve our process of that too as well. And we have really good foundational relationships within the emergency response or the, the service community here. Missing persons, again, consistent across the boards, no real, no real shocks there. As we go into page two, you've got the three-year comparison. Again, you can tell with the numbers being in 2022, 341, and then the last couple of years have been consistent for total calls of service around the 277, 278 mark. Impair or pardon me intimate partner violence is very consistent. We usually get around two to three a quarter, and you see that here as well. Their sexual assault investigations, of course, is one thing that has, has increased. Those are related to the, the spiked drinks or the tainted drink files that we've been getting, which I'll speak more of in a little bit. And again, consistently across the board, you can see some of the, the breakdown for the break and enters that we do. And as that includes obviously those reporting structures for alarms, et cetera. Nothing too dramatic really there. Motor vehicle incidents are again very consistent. It's a fairly common issue. You can see the imperates have gradually increased over the last three years, not significantly, but enough to sort of point towards what the membership kind of focuses. For example, we had a member in the last physical or the last calendar year qualify. There's Alexis team that some focuses on the Alexa middle our family, a young woman, a young girl, pardon me, that was killed in the lower mainland several, several years ago. Her family does an award process for that to recognize police officers that do a substantial amount of impaired investigations. We actually have a, a member in our detachment that qualified for what they refer to as their all-star team, which is getting over 51 imperates in a calendar year for a general duty member. That is exceptional work and recognize Karsten Preibar, a constable that works out of the Sparwood office for that. Just exceptional, exceptional work on his part. And that's kind of conclusive across the board really for the entire team. They do a lot of, a lot of investigational work with impaired here. As you can tell, the cause disturbance files on the, in the general quarter have kind of stayed consistent, but we are seeing.
Sorry, Staff Sergeant.
Sorry, go ahead.
Counsel Ramadas.
I apologize. Go ahead.
No, no.
Thanks, Your Worship. With regards to impaired driving, does, did the legalization of cannabis have anything to do with that or is it just?
We don't see a lot of that, like particularly like, they do, obviously, as far as an investigational standpoint, it, it can be challenging at times depending on the drug recognition experts that are available for that. We've been working towards trying to get a member trained for that program. It's a very intensive course, however, and the cost isn't so much a factor in relationship to that. It's just trying to get a member into the courses as proven difficult. So essentially with the drug recognition expert being in there and having had that experience in, in my past post where we had actually the provincial expert in the province actually worked in area, and then we had another two members that were qualified for that program. We had to buy a bigger fridge to give you an impression about how much impact that has. So, but it's difficult to try to, to try and generate the, not the interest. There's definitely interest there in our detachment to get those courses, but unfortunately it's just not something that's easy to do, and it's very limited amounts of those police officers that have that training in the area. And in some cases have to come like three or four hours would come to our place, our locations for it. So it proves difficult at times based upon the requirements under the criminal code. So, but when they do cross it in, in the serious situations, obviously, we do fully go after that particular portion of the law too as well. So we don't get too many here, but that's mainly due to the fact we just don't have the level of training in regards to that to be able to proceed with criminal caseload for that. Definitely on provincial level, that's done occasionally.
Sorry, Staff Sergeant, saying with that line of questioning a little bit, so looking at your numbers, impaired investigations, you talked about the, I'm sorry if I get this wrong, the Alexa team member?
Yeah, the Alexa team.
Yeah, so and he's Elk Valley detachment, he's based in?
Well, he's, yeah, so he's, well, I mean, as you know, we're a regional model, right? So part of, part of investigations include those 17 that were in that portion. He had, I think, 58 somewhere in that level, 58 last year. So, and that's just him. That's, that's one, that's one member. So obviously literally every member here does them. So, and we expect that only to increase. That makes sense.
Well, I'm just curious if it's a matter of focus or it's a matter of number, like overall?
Oh, where the numbers are.
Seven, 17.
Yeah.
In Fernie municipal policing and only, sorry, eight, one and five in the balance of the, the regional district and the, and the Elk Valley. So I'm, I'm wondering if, if there's a, and I'm not suggesting it's good, bad or indifferent. I'm curious, is there, is there a keener focus on the community of Fernie?
Um, a keener focus?
Yeah.
Um, I think that generates itself just because of the, the, the businesses and the environment here in regards to that, not saying that in a bad way whatsoever. Certainly there is a great deal of responsibility within that community, within the businesses of Fernie, and, and we have ongoing conversations with them, but certainly because of your community's a, a ski resort and, you know, visitor town, you're going to have that level of focus to a certain extent. And certainly, as you, as you all know, the, the call volumes at times during the nights generally come from Fernie. So I could say, yeah, outright that the focus for members, generally speaking, unless there's calls somewhere else, they're going to be coming to this area just for, just for that reason. And that's not to be cruel or mean.
No, 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 I appreciate that clarity because if it's, if it's focused based on calls in the region, that's.
Well, historically, I would think that, you know, I mean.
Versus, we're going to set up in Fernie because that's where we're going to catch.
No, 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 by, by not any extremes, no. So certainly, trust me, they, they do share the wealth and, you know, they do patrol. We have, we have very significant and, and well asked for. I mean, as I was telling, I was telling someone earlier today, like the, the projects we have for traffic are very significant. Those are generally the asks that you have from us across the board, whether it be yourselves or Sparwood or Alfred. So that tends to be our, our projects that we end up having. So there's an Alfred project for that to deal with speeding to and from, in particular around the, the mine, you know, release times because of the increase in speeds that are happening on the highway there. So we have moderate success in that. Sparwoods tends to be a little more general, more so kind of across the board with things. We tried to focus on, on different things there. It's just, it just works that way. And of course, here in the community, you know, I've referenced it several times, speaking with you, the ongoing Isabel Dickens or the school enforcement process, Izzy Dizzy, as we call it, the Izzy Dizzy project. And that kind of encompasses everything though. It's not just, it's not just a school zone, it's everything around Fernie. So yeah, we do have a focus because of what you've asked us to do. So, and certainly I think the, it's not so much generally the call volume, it's just these are where the people are, right? So we're generally going to end up where, where the people are, much like we do in the South Country in the summertime when, you know, the refocus that I know you're aware of there that we've talked about in the past, and I will mention again tonight, is when we're dealing with the rural significance of the call volume down there and how that impacts generally the operations of our, of our units here within Bernie, Sparwood and Alfred, that that's a necessity for us to change in how we approach and approach and deal with those areas, especially in the summertime when there's upwards of 300,000 people there over four months. So it's, it creates an impact for us and we're just trying to adjust to that. So if I reference that for you, that would be a best reference I have is that we try and adjust according to where the numbers are.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, for sure. Anyone else have any questions around that? Again, the impaired are broken down a little bit more further later on down the list, which you may have seen if you've seen this already.
Sorry, Stan, Counsel Nixon.
Oh, no, I, I, yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I'm just curious about the, if there is a motor vehicle incident and the car goes off into the ditch and the driver's taken to the hospital.
Yep.
Does the RCMP, do you go and drug test or do an alcohol test on the person in the hospital? Or is that like, is that?
Well, there has to be evidence to support that. I mean, we do obviously have the ability to be able to do that under the law now, right? Just sort of randomly have people tested in those circumstances. We still, from our perspective, we still like to work towards having some sort of grounds to do so, in particular in a case where they've already been removed from the vehicle and we're suddenly having contact with the driver at the, at the hospital and trying to build a case that way. Sometimes it can prove difficult just based upon witness information or, or driving evidence, you know, right? Which is a huge thing, obviously, for that, those type of things. If we have continuity of that person from the get-go via witnesses or whatever, then yes, we'll progress that way. As far as randomly doing that, it's not so much, like I said, it's not so much random. It's something that we still try and lean towards having reasonable grounds to believe a person's committed an offense in those particular cases. Again, if you're talking about like highway checks, those are, those are different entirely. In fact, they're moving towards a model where, and it's not necessarily us, it's more the BC Highway Patrol where random testing is entirely possible under the current legislation that we, we have with under the criminal code as well as provincially. So there's in cases with the Highway Patrol in particular, and I'm not trying to speak for that, that side of our organization, but generally speaking, we're being trained to the aspect is it just becomes part of our process during a normal stop. So the members will actually have the device on them. They'll, they'll produce that even in the cases of not having any reasonable grounds or reasonable suspicion that, that some sort of alcohol is there and just do the test. It happens very quickly. It's usually like within, once it's actually performed properly, and I've seen it done myself, within 15 seconds, impacts the driver very little, does not abstain them or, or create a situation where their, where their charter rights are affected at all by it. It's just an arbitrary detention and it proceeds from there. So those, that situation has definitely changed, but with a vehicle crash or something where somebody goes off-road and we're say late to it, it's definitely a bit different. That makes sense? Yeah, perfect. Um, anybody else for that one? Sorry, that's a, that's a good one. I appreciate the questions. Thank you. So obviously moving forward, we have our policing service priorities as we just talked about impaired driving, traffic enforcement, our community relations is very important to us. Prolific offender management program as part of our general investigative section that we have in place now, which has been active since November. So relatively new from reporting standpoint, like I believe I may have mentioned it the last time I was here, but we actually have moved a corporal position, a provincial corporal position and as well as a provincial constable position into a general investigative section for it. That's to help support more our serious investigative sides as well as support our active work with our prolific offender management program, which is a provincial mandated thing. You'll, you probably heard it before, the REVO, the repeat offender programs and stuff like that that are circling around. It's part of that. We're not necessarily under that model, but we're just starting to build that direction. And then of course, part of that as well as the South Country patrols, which is something that we're definitely focused on. We've been asked to be focused on that by you all as well as Sparwood, as well as Alfred in regards to how we approach those situations. So as part of the, the general investigative section, we're hoping to put the reserve member that we have with, we have available to us within that unit operating under that. And then we're hoping to move another provincial member within the detachment into that position so that those two members will be responsible to patrol, not actively all the time, of course, but during their schedules into the South Country during the summer. And again, this is all predicated upon availability of manpower, et cetera, but currently we're in really good shape. So this should work for us. And then that will, that will necessarily stop, we hope anyway, the transition from, say, if we have the memberships working here and we've got something active down there and those members are working, they're able to address the situation in the South Country without interfering with any responses here for us within either Fernies, Barwood, Alfred or regionally. That's really important to me. I feel that the response time and the fact that, you know, both the citizens that live here have a, have an, we have an obligation to give them appropriate service. And so this is one reason why we're, we're trying to do this. Again, I say trying to do this because it's a, it's an experimental model basically at this point to see how things would work. It worked very well last year with my reservist James Malone, who was down in the South Country. Very positive comments across the board, not only from, from you or definitely from Mayor Milligan, but certainly down in the South Country, whether it be Baines Lake or even Jaffrey, those areas in there. And we're hoping to also have more impact too in the grassmower community too as well. So those are things we're moving towards. Any questions around that? Obviously, we do have a move towards the next year's goals and objectives for the detachment under our annual performance plan. And I had put that messaging out to Mayor Milligan as well as Mr. Bernowski recently within the last three weeks or so, just to see if those things were changed. So I would hope that if you have any, any things that you would like us to address or any concerns that you would like us to bring forward to our table so we can help to do that work for you, a focus, a focus you'd like us to go with, that you bring those forward? If not, we'll likely continue with the plan that we currently have. So city of Fernie highlights, so obviously we had a light at the province impaired driving campaign on December 7th. That was with BC Highway Patrol. We contributed, I believe, members from both Fernie Municipal as well as the provincial units, the side of things into that. It was a pretty successful evening. We obviously had a report of a stranger attack on a woman in Fernie involving the skier that was very well publicized. We investigated that to completion essentially and did not, well, at this point, the investigation's been concluded pending further information respectively. We haven't received any reports of the spiked drinks that as we spoke about briefly already in this quarter or Jim, the last quarter, sorry, but since then we've had, I believe, seven, eight events that have been reported in regards to that. We have one particular file that we're, while we're investigating all of them continually, of course, but we have one that's been sent to the lab. We did get some, some samples that we were able to send to the lab for that for testing. Those will take a little while to come back just to see whether or not there was any type of foreign substance within, within the, the, the offered DNA evidence that we'd be able to get or the, be able to go through. So we're hoping that we, you know, well, clearly I'm hoping that nothing's happened with that and that they weren't drugged or that sort of thing. That's obviously where we like to be, but in the event there is, it does give us a pathway. Obviously, our general investigative section has been focused on these events. We've gone through and tried to come up with some sort of relative consistencies or, or some sort of non-randomness part of those events, and that's proven very difficult to find. They're all involving reported from different, different businesses within the community, different times, different dates involving multiple different servers, people, bartenders, you name it, everything. There's no consistency to it, even the drinks being consumed, they're not consistent at all. So these are things that are proving and proving from investigative standpoint, difficult to do. However, on the, on the forward side, we've been very proactive within the community for this, and you're probably very aware of this. We work very closely, especially with the, with our victim services and the Women's Resource Center side, making sure we have support for this. Interior Health, we have continuing conversations with them regarding how we're approaching and being able to support that. Obviously lacking a, like a lab, basically where we could send people to, a hospital is our best resource for that. So we've been working closely with Leila Tomlinson and, and others within the, the Fernie Hospital to make sure we have a process in place. And actually, we're meeting Brad and I are meeting with them again on Thursday, just to make sure we're all on the same page with things, which I believe we are. Lots of different things we're having, we're doing active bar patrols or walks. We call them sort of hot, hot walks. What that means is essentially it's very quick. You don't want people to become comfortable with us being there, right? You want us to kind of be there for a short time in, in repetition, but or maybe once or twice a night, but not for a long time. Cause then we blend into scenery, right? We're just like, if you're at some place and say, for example, Mayor, Mayor Milligan walks into town, oh, there's the mayor. And then after a while, he becomes part of the wallpaper, right? Basically, no offense, sir, but, you know, but he essentially, he essentially become part of the wallpaper, right? So in our case, in our case, we're looking at it from just being in there, being visible, being available, talking with the staff, you know, talking to the patrons that are in the, in the, the business at the time. And from the outset, since you've been doing that for over a month now, it's been very positive, very receptive, working closely with the business to that. So I think we've done a lot doing that. We met with social media influencers in, in the community regarding this. I spoke with one, one lady in particular for about two and a half hours one evening. Mayor Milligan and Michael are very aware of this, talking to, talking to them about the issues and what they were coming forward and stuff. So we've tried to cover off as much basis using the resources and the people that we have to make sure that we're doing as much as we possibly can to try and make sure, A, that they're properly investigated and B, that people feel properly supported. The messaging we're getting from the community is that people, the, the women and men, there are both women and men involved in this, are supported. There's actually one of our staff members too as well. So it's, so it's interesting that way so that to make sure that they feel supported and they feel listened to, and I feel we're accomplishing that. If you've heard different, please let me know. Obviously, we're very aware that this is a very serious social issue here and criminal issue here potentially, and we're just trying to do as much as possible to try and cover these things off. So anybody have any questions about that before I go on to the next point? Absolutely.
Oh, Counsel McIsaac, sorry.
Thank you, Worship. Thanks, Staff Sergeant. I, it was a very comprehensive look at what's become a highlighted problem lately. I'm, I'd be curious if you'd like to speak more to the, your comments in your report regarding becoming aware of this through social media and whether or not that's had a significant impact on your ability to investigate or communicate with the public? And how, like, how has that communication on social media either supported or, or hindered your ability to?
Well, I, I, I thank you. I appreciate the question. I think, I think the first two or three reports that we had did not come through any type of social media platform, any type of connection that way. Once I met with the social media influence coordinator for one of the, one of the pages that are on Instagram at this point, basically, I think, you know, they had a lot of input into kind of like the community based stuff, at least I felt at the time. Respectively, haven't heard from her since that particular meeting, but that's neither here nor there, you know, but, but I believe that I think, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the word we were getting from them and from outside the community was like, we weren't doing enough, we were, we weren't doing things and we weren't really like directly publicizing it while we were still trying to kind of figure out really what was going on. So as far as an impact from them, I would say negative or positive. I think, you know, I think at the time, I think it offers us a positiveness, and I think it still does in regards to getting the word out of what we're doing, or we're trying to do. And so when we met with the, the influencer in particular, it was a really positive meeting. Like I said, I expected to be about half hour. It was two and a half hours long, a lot of good detailed questions to what she felt were from the people that she had spoken to that were hesitant to come forward to us. And then that passed on and then within days, I think we had another three or four reported to us. So, you know, I mean, things changed because of that. So I think it'd be really positive as long as we're in that sort of thinking of it, right? Then respectfully, obviously, you know, they're, they're actively, they're active investigations. So I mean, to comment on the individual investigations would be proper at this point, but certainly there are challenges around that just because of the public nature of the, of the events and potentially the person amongst other events, not only, not only this event in particular, but let's look at the, this, the assault with the skier, for example, that everybody references that I spoke about briefly. That was very publicly put on social media too as well, and that impacted to a certain extent, some of our, sorry, Brad's covering shift tonight, so that's why he's walking out. We just have training going on tomorrow. So, you know, I, I think it does have its negatives for sure, obviously. I'd be a fool not to admit that, but I think in this particular case, it's actually helped us because we've been so proactive with it. And it's not just been us, but also our victim services worker who obviously RDEK and yourselves have particular funding towards, right? Heather's been wonderful during this and very supportive in talking with victims and trying to get them to come forward. And I know she has, I believe, a couple more, a couple more people that haven't come forward yet. And we've actually had, you know, men come forward too as well, which I think in, whether it, this day and age or not, I think that's, that's really, really good referencing to how we're addressing this situation is because they're, they're trusting us to bring their information forward and to handle it appropriately. I'll then answer your question. I, I feel, I feel it's been, it's been a positive thus far, and I wouldn't, I mean, yeah, there's hesitancy amongst the police to have that sort of outlet out there. And yes, it can be distracted to investigations, but I think in this particular case, it's helped us because we've been able to address it right away and get the messaging out for it and for the B through a media release we did, but the conversation I had with different people and that Heather has too as well and Brad's had, I think it's been really positive. Any other questions surrounding that? So and lastly, I'll just mention the, we did have a vulnerable client in the hospital that we assisted with, and I do know I, I mentioned this to, to His Worship and as well as Michael, just in regards to. That we assisted with and I do know I, I mentioned this to, to his worship and as well as Michael, just in regards to. Working with interior health to, to ensure that this particular. Individual had support from us, but also that the, the, the client that we were dealing with and ended up actually arresting. And putting on conditions in relation to this offense was treated appropriately. And, you know, we addressed that, there's that situation. You know, with, with the appropriate action, given the circumstances. It was a bit of a, it was a bit of a challenge, really, you know, and Brad and I were both there actively during the, during the arrest. So it. You know, but all in all, after that point went extremely well. And there was, thus far, we haven't had a repeat. Incident and through with working with security with interior health. The individual that was here has been moved to a discreet location. So which is not in the knowledge of that person. So I think all in all, even though it went over a few days, it worked out appropriately. So you have the zone comparisons that you can see on the map there just in regards to that. Interesting thing I find is just the balance outside of potentially Alfred, just because historically they've usually been at least half the whole volume. But there's a definite balance among the three in the R D K or the provincial areas along with Sparwood. Et cetera. And then of course you got the regional, the Ferney municipal quarterly comparison. Over the, over the quarters, obviously summer being our most significant call volume event wise. And that would be consistent amongst all. Member strength at the moment, we're, we're doing actually more than fine. Comparison to other areas, we've been progressive and be able to pursue and fortunately had some things land in our lap. We are losing a member from your municipal strength. They're going to the Integrated Child Exploitation Team that works out of headquarters in, in Surrey. So a good move for them and it speaks positively to the investigational work that Brad has instilled in our investigation. Investigations too as well. So that's a, a kudos, I think, just to the member themselves, but also just what we do here. So they're going to be investigating child pornography for the most part provincially. And then we have another member who's a provincial member out of Sparwood who's transferring to the Kelowna detachment. And they'll probably be moving in the next month and a half, both of them probably in that point. Fortunately, with those two leaving, we had two experienced police officers who were in the, we call the E P O program, Experienced Police Officer Program. Kind of fall into our laps. So. They're going to be backfilling much sooner than what you experienced the last time where we dealt with, I think, a seventeen month delay before one of your positions was filled. I expect that to be filled by, well, literally the end of March. So that's good news. You might actually get some duplicity for a little while. Maybe we'd have more members than we normally have. And then the other one, even though she'll be here at the same time, because there are a couple coming to our area. She won't be going through the Experienced Police Officer course that the R C M P has members complete until August. So by the end of, by the end of August, beginning of September, we'll be back to full strength. So operationally at this point. Yeah, with no, with no foreseeable moves beyond that currently right now. So I don't think we're going to face any, any other issues moving forward. Again, knocking out with.
Thank you, Staff Sergeant. That is encouraging.
Yeah.
I'll look to council. Any questions on what you've heard thus far and?
The new beat might be taking a bit longer than normal.
I did, I did ask a couple of just high level ones, the, the fourteen M V Is in Ferney.
Yep.
Is there a hotspot? Like, are they clustered in any one location or are they?
Typically, typically the events here within Ferney, to my knowledge, and Brad reached out and corrected me. Would be within the highway corridor, right? You know, in intersections there, the one I believe today would be, I would imagine. So, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's fairly, that's fairly common.
Typically on the highway through town?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's typically where it happens. We are, we are doing a bit of statistical work for. Mayor Derek Wilkes from Sparwood as part of his, his traffic committee work that he does for Highway Three. With the intersection at the Ferney Alpine Resort, we just got that today actually. So, you know, there is some, obviously, I know, I know you are familiar with it, but. Just putting it out there. So we're helping support that a bit in the means of just providing the statistics for it. I don't think there'll be anything dramatic, but certainly along the corridor, that's where the events happen. Very rarely is there anything within the, within the township itself, like within the city itself, like it's just not something that occurs like again, you know, would.
Thank you.
Jinx myself.
Yeah. And, and just one more quick question. The fraud that you flagged, there's. Three, are they online fraud? Like what, what's the nature?
Typically online fraud.
Okay.
Lots of times involving here anyway, like marketplace events. Or some type of perhaps like ticket purchase or whatever. You see that we're seeing that quite a bit more.
Okay.
Sometimes it does involve greater, greater obstacles, like either on a larger scale. For whatever reason, the person's either given access or has given access. So certainly that is. That is potential for that. And we do see that occasionally. It's not a, it's not an overflow thing in the area, thankfully, but. Having experienced that in past places, yeah, sometimes it can get a little bit, a little bit crazy, but. Most of the time it's like, it's limited stuff. So.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Hamilton.
Thank you. I did actually have one question and we're paused on the perfect spot. What does A S D stand for?
Oh, it's approved screening device.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Yeah. So that's the, that's the fail section. So this is a breakdown of the Ferney municipal stats. So you see there's seventeen, like you said previously. You have seven three day warrants, which essentially mean they blow a warrant on the, the approved screening device or the F S T as we have it for short. That has, then you have nine fails, meaning the person's usually is blowing. Now again, the fail for the ninety day is the provincial program for the immediate roadside prohibition. That's what that, that's what that is from. So that's generally what members generally will lean towards here because typically we're finding people that don't have prior history. And even that point, the, the grounds have kind of shifted for that a little bit where it used to be within. Five years, you know, now it's down to within two years because they're very. Well, let's face it, they're very penal programs, right? You know, and I think ultimately. Is supporting lesser cases for impaired driving, in my opinion. And then you, of course, you have a refusal, which means somebody said no to the, to the approved screening device and it wouldn't blow. So that, that equates to the same ninety day. Restriction. Their car is also seized and impounded under provincial legislation for thirty days. So it doesn't reference that, but. All of those essentially involve that the warrant would be, it would be a bit different, but certainly the, the fails involve a thirty day impound too as well. So it's a significant cost. And if they have repeat offenses, typically the superintendent of motor vehicles end up with something like. Like some sort of device in the car, you know, right to the immobilizer device in the car. Have to go into, if you're going to continue to be able to drive and usually there's some remedial courses too as well. End up taking. So it can be fairly significant to penal. Particular for a new driver and you see some violation ticket breakdowns, some nothing too shocking there. The system is a bit different now. So we're able to track those a bit better. Tickets generally speaking are all done electronically now online and they're printed out actually in the car. So it's more accurate. You don't have the scribbled writing and trying to figure out which member is which, when you want to. Complain about somebody stopping you for speeding. So it's, it's very evident on the form. But yeah, you generally see the, the trends there. That doesn't necessarily mean those are all the vehicle stops. Those are just opportunities where members have chosen to give them a violation ticket or a warning in some cases. So. It does not, does not indicate how many vehicle stops members do, which are fairly significant. So you have the intimate, and again, this, this form is a working document. This is the first time we presented it. So it's. Situational breakdowns to what we have. You can see the intimate partner violence investigations consistently to over the last. Year essentially to a quarter. Nothing unusual there. You have the school liaison work that we do obviously has been quite significant. You have. We have a more focused effort in the schools this year. In particular, we have a good program that's being run by Corporal Emma Dyer, who is on. Your corporal actually under the municipal program. Unfortunately, she worked today, but I didn't drag her here tonight. So I didn't think she was here. So I apologize. Not to try getting here tonight to meet her, but you may remember from the past, she has been here before serving as a constable. Do an excellent work as part of her supervisor development program. She's along with a funding provided through a, through a program through. The M E T and Aboriginal and the Solicitor General. They have pizza with a cop. So essentially we're going to all levels within the school, I believe, from grade seven, eight, nine. Or is it everybody? Seven through twelve, sorry. Seven through twelve at various points. We have different meetings with the kids. So. Members, we've worked it out now that we actually show up in uniform and we're working and stuff just to promote that sort of visibility and that context that we're, hey, we're people too. So your Sergeant Gregory there was putting into the test there the other day with grades seven and eights in the Ferney High School and. That guy was working, let me put it that way. You know, he was, he was, he was tossing balls around like crazy. But. Anyway, it gives us an opportunity to have sort of a fun event with the kids. And then we sit down with them and this is over usually about an hour and a half to two hours. We sit down with them and have a one to one conversation. Sometimes the conversations are where you would expect the. Grade seven kid to go, hey, have you ever shot your gun? But actually, a lot of the times, at least in my experience, doing them. Really thoughtful conversation and a chance to build relationships with kids that way. This is going to progress further once we get to May and June, where we actually focus as part of the grant process. Along with Wild Minds, people here within Far, within Ferney, sorry. That are, that are doing it with M E T and Indigenous kids only. So a very small closer group and we're going to work towards with them. Trying to build foundations within, within that group, which is really the main purpose of, of the grants. However, I guess the. The woman who came out with the, the project and stuff got a lot more money than she thought. So this is what we're able to do this thing. So really, really good news that way. And we're getting a really active response from the group, very consistent members coming from the group for the Pizza with a Cop event and. And outside of work too as well. So really positive. And we're hoping that once we get to May and June and start the Indigenous M E T program specifically for that, that will, will progress from. Just plain clothes, which is what the program calls for, to working towards in September, having a more visible uniform present. So they see us as really necessarily like humans, you know, at first. And then progress towards police officers. Oh, you're a human in a police uniform. So that's where the, in a general sort of sense where the program is trying to go. So looking forward, looking forward to that. We obviously have been engaged with the schools much more this year, not only because of that, but just because of refocus. Necessarily on my part. And I mentioned this to, to his worship before that, you know, having no kids in school has sort of. Been interesting for me since I've been here. And so we shifted this year to a focus to make sure we're getting in the schools and some of that is helping support for criminal activity. In the school, more or less dealing with alleged assaults or harassment type complaints. And so we had a meeting, but last week, I believe it was for about two and a half hours. Two of the constables were in the Ferney, Ferney School, I'm talking with various kids and supporting the school. So. Those are the type of things that we're dealing with too as well, just trying to reduce the impact in vulnerable groups in the community, which is. What this group, that group particularly from Ferney was and, you know, building relations across that area. So, yeah, so I think we're doing some good things out there.
Thank you, Staff Sergeant. Appreciate the report. Any further questions from council? Seeing none? Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. I'll shut it off this time.
Be careful out there. Hill Street Blues.
Hey, hey.
Yeah. Item six point two, Ferney Trails Alliance, a report from the executive director. Welcome.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Your worship and counselors and directors and city staff, thank you very much for having me. My name is Melanie Wrigglesworth and I'm the executive director. Of the Ferney Trails Alliance. I'm just going to start my timer so that I don't go. Yeah. So tonight I'm here to share with you the impact that the Ferney Trails Alliance has on, on the community. Oh, my gosh. What did I do? Can you help me move my slides back? Sorry. Yeah. I have a Mac, not this. Can I use the arrows instead of the mouse? Yes. Okay, there you go. So the value of the trails to the local businesses, to the community as a whole. The trails are used every single day in our, in our community, no matter the weather, the conditions or time of day. When you talk about Ferney. The trail network, people talk about our amazing trail network and tourism Ferney, they advertise how awesome our trails are. Even Elk Valley Resources use the trails to get here to folks to come here to work. So good place to, to work and then you get to play outside. In the recruitment package, the city Ferney, you also advertise our trails on your website and about our network. We're not going to make it through this entire presentation today. So I hope that you've taken the time. To read through the slide deck and I'll be intentionally going through this quickly. So the goals for this evening is what I just spoke about and also demonstrating the gap in funding in terms of our annual operating costs. Comparisons to other mountain town communities in B C. And the ideal goal tonight is to establish long term annual funding to power Ferney Trails. Who uses the trails in Ferney here? Can you guys show hands? Yeah, I think pretty much everyone use them, whether they're on foot, on bike in the winter. You guys all use them and our, our mission to develop, maintain and enhance a human powered trail network in Ferney, I think we're kind of knocking it out of the park and doing a good job. Why does it matter what we do? So the F D A is responsible for trail building, year round trail maintenance, winter grooming costs associated with those growing year round needs. But the trails are used by tourists and locals alike. And. I just wanted to sort of emphasize the massive like sort of economic and social impact that we have. Based on our population numbers and visitor numbers, we could extrapolate that the trail network in Ferney brings in on average somewhere between fifteen and twenty, twenty million dollars every year to our, to our community. So as, as you can all see from the show of hands, you guys said, most of us in this room can agree, the reason that we live here. Is because of our world class ski hill, but also because of our world class trail network in our backyard. It's not just for tourism. It's, it's for the residents of Ferney as well too. So I wanted to go over a little bit of our trail stats that we can show from, you know, twenty fourteen, just the increase in trail use. That we have in and around Ferney. And these also cause us to have sort of increased maintenance costs associated with our, with our organization. The Ferney Trails Alliance manages over three hundred and seventy kilometers of trails in the Ferney area. As well as the Wigwam Trail and in the South Country, the Elk Rim Trail. Our trails are all multi-use. We don't just focus on mountain bike trails, but we do, we do have some hiking specific trails. I wanted to go over a little bit, the Ferney Trails Alliance as an organization has changed since two thousand and eight.
Sorry, I apologize. We have a question, Councilor.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Amadas.
So you can stop your timer. Well.
Oh, no, it's okay. It's fine.
If we're asking questions.
Okay, that's good. I didn't know if I had to present and then you asked. So this is good. This is better.
Thanks, Your Worship. With the, if you can go back three, ah, that's like that.
Yeah.
Is it just a case of better data collection or is it?
Well, this actually isn't better data collection. This is actually just showing two apps. So two, so Trail Forks and Strava. So if you're using those apps, that's causing those check-ins, but not just, you know, if, you know, Councilor Nixon just goes for a walk on the trail, it doesn't count that. So this is just people actually engaging and using an app to track what they're doing, doing a check-in on the trail. Does that answer your question? Okay. Like.
Yeah, please further.
Just as a, you know, I can't believe there was only eight hundred and thirty six users in twenty fourteen, right?
Well, I think back then, I, I think back then Trail Forks and Java were not as popular as they are now, right? Yeah. So this is not capturing the accurate amount of data. This is just showing you like, these are just people that are using two apps. That's, that's number, that are numbers I'm getting from. We can pull numbers from our trail counters as well, but that's also not accurate because that's out and back. But I'm going to speak to this a little bit further that we're going to be doing like an economic impact study. So we'll have more valuable data.
You got better ways to track.
We have better ways to track. Yes, yes. I'm not just basing my ask on those numbers. So the, now that the Ferney Trails Alliance is an established organization, we use Esri and then a G I S database to sort of map all of our assets. All those little white points that you see on that map are all of our assets, such as culverts, our technical trail features, any sort of signage or bench. And we're required with all of our landowners to maintain those every year and do inspections. So those little red dots you see that are M's or greens. Those are maintenance points and those are what we use to sort of fill our maintenance schedule that we use out on the trails for our, our trails manager and our trail crew. And we also use sort of handheld devices out on the trail and we have field maps. So when trail crew are out there, they can look at the day and look at the plan and decide where the work is and know exactly what, what they're fixing and what they're doing. And then we can mark that asset as repaired. It also takes a photo of that asset. So you can see that bench in the photo. So you can scroll down, you can click on the asset and you can see exactly what you're looking at and exactly what's there. So if it's not there, it's been stolen and you need to replace it or it's in repair. We also have a sort of a winter grooming application now called Nordic Pulse that we're using as a winter grooming collaborative. To track sort of live winter grooming. So people can see exactly, there's a central place to check that was funded through Tourism Ferney. The other interesting thing about Ferney is that we have seventeen different landowners in our, in our network. Most other trail organizations have one or two, but we have sort of this fabric of different landowners that we weave together. We have land use agreements with the majority of them. We work very closely with them. We submit operating plans and monthly reports to them so they know what we're doing and we're up to for the rest of the year. This is sort of a brief snapshot of what we did in two thousand and twenty four. One of the key numbers I think you can pull away from this is eleven thousand hours of volunteer time. If you put that into an eight hour day, that's three hundred and fifty one days that we spent. If you put that into an eight hour day, that's three hundred and fifty one days that we spent um, in volunteer hours working out on the trails, so. Um, for those of you that use it, I'm sure you appreciate and how well well maintained the trails were last year. Um, so one of the things I want to discuss with you is how we get our funding at the F D A. So we um, have sort of two sort of sources of funding um, that we use, so we have our unrestricted funding, which is our general maintenance fund, and then we also have grant funding. That are for specific projects, so right now I'm speaking to just of our general maintenance unrestricted funding. Um, and from that, the F D A um, fundraises, you know, for through sponsorship, um, through Trails Passes, um, fundraising donations. Where we reached about two hundred fifteen thousand with a fifty five thousand dollar shortfall in two thousand and twenty four. Um, the F D A also acknowledges that we do get some funds from the Resort Municipality Initiative and the Columbia Basin Trust. Um, but these funds are restricted and do not contribute to our operating expenses. Um, due to more users on our trails and the increased maintenance requirements, um, the F D A had to dip into reserved. Reserves this last year, um, the board made a strategic decision to use some of the funding reserves um, to cover those costs. Um, the F D A does not have an annual sustainable source of funding and the F D A does not receive any funding from the city of Ferny. Um, so one of the slides I wanted to show is how other communities are funded in both in B C. So if you take a look at this slide, um, you can see Whistler, um, North, City of Vancouver, City of Kamloops, United Riders of Cumberland, which is City of Cumberland, Rossland. Um, and you can see the number of kilometers of the trails that are maintained and the funding amounts that they get. So the F D A has the most number of trails that we maintain, yet we do not have any funding um, from. Um, the city of Ferny, um, the city of Ferny, the Ferny, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, so um. Whistler in particular.
Yes.
Uh, that's a big number.
It is a big number. That is a sort of a joint funding from the municipality, R M I funding.
Okay.
And from um, also from their M R D T tax.
Ah, okay, that was my question, actually, where is that funding stream?
Yeah, and they have a different service agreement with their with their municipality, so they have a fee for service agreement. That they have every year, so that's, it increases or decreases based on those funds. Um, that they have that set up, but everyone else has a direct, um, they receive funding directly from their municipality.
And that two hundred kilometers, is it?
Within the municipality of Whistler, so similarly similar with ours, like if you put a pin in the center of Ferny and you drew like a nine kilometer circle outside of Ferny. That would be the the area of capture that we have our trails and very similar to Whistler as well.
Counselor, you.
Thanks, Your Worship, um, Mel, I just wanted to ask, like, are we unique in, you mentioned the different landowners and I know. You guys work really well with the landowners, um, is that the case for the other folks on this map, do you know?
Yeah, well, um, Cumberland is quite similar to what Ferny has, they have quite a few landowners and a lot of forestry operators like how we have in in Ferny. Um, Canmore is there, you know, for their example, they're in Alberta, which is also different, but they have just the municipality of Canmore and then they are on crown land. Um, but Ferny definitely is unique with the amount of landowners that we have, for sure, yeah. Um, so the, one of the things that um, I wanted to also sort of share with you guys is I wanted to pull some examples from from some economic impact studies that were done in. Squamish and Golden, Ferny kind of fits in the middle between the population base between Squamish and Golden. And the economic impact in Squamish was enormous, I mean, it's eight from eight point four million dollars of money, and this is just doing an economic. Study on mountain bikers in the community, so our economic impact study would look a lot different because we would have all the trail users. As well as Golden game, same thing, it was eight point nine million dollars of economic impact that they had, and that's just for interviewing mountain bikers. So if I wanted to take this to show, based on our population numbers and visitor numbers, we could extrapolate that the Ferny network could get somewhere between. Ten and twenty million dollars that we're bringing in in economic value to the city of Ferny. Um, so the F D A would like, you know, our request is the following, we'd like to ramp up sort of to be in line with other communities and what they're receiving. Um, and um, I I wanted to sort of elevate our our community partnership that we have, a partner status with the with the city of Ferny. Um, and request fifty five thousand dollars in funding for trail maintenance um, for two thousand and twenty five. Um, and and in years, uh, not after that, like to have that increased funding to be able to be in line with other B C communities. Um, I really appreciate the support that I get from Brad and Jackie and the community when we're running events, I still would like to continue, sorry, continue that. And um, compared to other community partners that are already established in Ferny, the F D A also does not have a base of operations. We were able before to operate out of the Aquatic Center, um, C cans, but um, that's no longer an opportunity for renting a a space, so. Most of the other community partners have a home and 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 annual funding, so that's one of the things that we are requesting. Um, I wanted to give some highlights of what some of the general maintenance things that we do out on our trails. Um, last year we spent about six hundred fifty hours brushing the trails. Um, we require and replace bridges, trail inspections, addressing safety concerns, that's our number one priority at the F D A is that trails are safe for all users. Um, new features and trail maintenance as per rec sites and trails B C has as trail standards that we follow for um, developing trails and using trails. Uh, we focus on accessibility for all trailer users, we do a lot of climate mitigation on the trails, there's a lot of big climatic events that happen in Ferny and we don't want to just build a trail that's not going to withstand those, so. With rock armoring and drainage and culvertings that we can protect our trails from those events. Um, we put a lot of wayfinding and signage, we have a lot of tourists and locals also who kind of get lost on our trails, so. Want to make sure they know where they're going and what they're doing, and we maintain the trails in all season, I mean, just today we were out cutting trees. Um, over off of the Trans Canada Trail that had fallen down just because of the snow and wind and, you know, we're always out there maintaining and making sure that things are safe. Um, now I sort of wanted to get into talking about our grant funded work and just give you an idea.
Before you do, Counselor Ramona.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see his hand.
Uh, thanks, Your Worship, uh, just in terms of the operating expense, the two hundred seventy thousand dollars that.
Yes.
You guys are spending, like, can you give us a color on, you know, what the breakdown is, like, what's your major expense?
A major expenses is our our pay our trail crew, so we have some funding from Columbia Basin Trust to. Fund our trail crew, but it's paying for our trucker, our general maintenance, our operating expenses, um, any materials or tools or anything like that. So that's all in our operating costs.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, maybe I should have read the report uh, much better, yeah, I'll I'll come back to you with more questions later, thank you.
Counselor, you.
Um, thanks, Worship, Mel, I, it was mentioned, I was just wondering, do you have a lot of, because you mentioned about if a bench is missing or something. Is there a lot of theft or vandalism or are you, do you find that's a big problem or is it pretty good?
It's pretty good, actually, the only thing actually that really ever gets stolen are the Trails to Ales sign. Uh, people like to take those, so those get have to be put up quite a bit, but we're working with the Ferny Brewing Company to come up with a strategy that maybe they should buy the signs and sell them at the end. So people can purchase them, um, but we don't, the odd time here and there, uh, most, most of the hazard is porcupines eating the wooden signs that we have and uh, yeah, that's about it, so. Yeah.
Counselor, you.
Thanks, Your Worship, uh, this is one follow up question, uh, it's okay if you don't have the answer.
No, that's okay.
And like, uh, the ones, the other, yeah, these, these other regions that you refer to here. Um, like any sense of how much they are spending in terms of uh, their operating expenses? Uh, with respect to how many kilometers of trails they are maintaining?
Yeah, um, I know that Cumberland is pretty similar to us, their operating budget every year is about two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, so very similar to us. Whistler is a lot more, um, they have an epic trail that they have to maintain, that that's a lot longer. Um, but yeah, we're very, very similar in our operating, operating expenses.
On a per kilometer basis?
On a per kilometer basis, yeah, for sure, yeah. Um, and just to mention, I didn't have um, Revelstoke on here and I didn't have Kimberly Trails Society because they gave me their information before I had to submit my my application or my presentation. And the Kimberly Trails Society, they get twenty five thousand dollars from uh, the city of Kimberly to maintain um, their trails. Um, and and the city of Revelstoke, he's actually doing the presentation next week to their council um, on this same topic, and so he's asking for the same amount of money that we are. Yeah, it's a common theme with other trail works. Um, yeah, and some of the projects I'm sure that you are familiar with at the that are grant funded uh, for the F D A is the Coal Creek Heritage Loop. Um, this is a uh, like a thirty kilometer loop that we're building um, up the Coal Creek, so we've completed the north side of the trail, this summer we'll be building a suspension bridge. Over the Coal Creek and then a loop that connects the south side, um, that will be completed in two thousand and twenty six, so it'll take us to the Ammonite as a big signage campaign. Um, we're really looking forward to this, but again, this is all grant funded, this is, this does not cover our operational costs. Um, the Dirt Jump Park last year, we had to um, move the Dirt Jump because of the um, new building, um, with the hundred space daycare and the twenty seven unit apartment building, which is much needed in our community, we were happy. To make the move, so we did that um, this little fall um, with success and it was all funded by New Commons, the the contractor that's building the project. The Ferny Valley Pathway, we're just finalizing the last bit of the engineering for the last phase to connect to the Ferny Ski Hill. Um, and we've applied for several grants to be able to fund that, but we'll probably be about one point eight million short on funding for that, so working with E V R and Columbia Basin Trust as well. And and, you know, fundraising as usual to complete that project. Um, other things that happened in two thousand and twenty four, Trail Dogs, super popular, one of the most fun blue trails, I think, in all of B C. Um, that was in Columbia Basin Trust and R M I funded project, we had a big grant from Trans Canada Trail to complete some refresh on the signage. Um, we have kiosks now at Mount Ferny, Mount Hosmer, um, uh, that are and signage. Um, for people that are coming to visit and use the trails, we worked with the evasive uh, invasive species council of B C to put up boot brushes and signage. Um, and we worked on a big high co-signage project with Tourism Ferny. And so I guess the F D A is right now is not just focusing just on trails maintenance, but we do a lot of work outside. Of trails and we want to be the leader in the province on on reconciliation, so we're working really closely with. The Tanaha and Akmakis and the and the Tobacco Plains Indian Band to have a memorandum of understanding. Um, because we have a Tanaha Treaty parcel of land um, in our network that we have to work with and. Um, it's great, it's been really great working with land managers there and we're we're coming to an agreement that we'll be able to. Do trail maintenance on on those trails and that's acceptable to their standards and best management practices that they got to participate in making, which is really fun. And we've also taken them out on the trails on mountain bike rides, this is us out there with Jesse. Um, and showing him some of the trails and he's, I've gone with him a few times and his first time fat biking, he's uh, he's quite adventurous, so it's lovely to be able to go out with him. Um, this is taking out Jason Gravel, the land manager onto Eric's trip, we were doing a rework of the features there, so involving them in the planning and being participating in it, which is, which was really fun. Um, and the other thing that we're working on is being a leader in the provinces on wildlife recreation conflict, we work closely with. Dr. Clayton Lamb with Wildsite and Y to Y, um, and we're trying to come up with a um, education campaign on and signage. For the public, we received a large grant from T C Energy and Y to Y to fund this project, and so signage will be placed on trailheads. That will look something like the following, showing, you know, actual riders and then six seconds later, a grizzly bear. You know, they use the trails to move around, especially during dawn and dusk hours, so we'll be educating the public on. You know, as much as you want to go for a run or a bike ride before work, maybe it's not the best time to go. Um, so we're working closely with them, so that's one of the things that I wanted to get across is as much as we do. Uh, trail maintenance and and build new things, we really want to be part of the community and educate the public and be a leader in the in the community as far as a Trails Alliance. Trails Alliance goes. Um, this is sort of showing you um, that we are able to fundraise and 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 make money, but it's still not enough. Um, so these are our Trails Pass sales from last year and uh, hoping that everyone has gotten their two thousand and twenty five Trails Pass. Um, for this year, they're on sale right now. Um, and then I wanted to share with you that we are a part of the Mountain Bike B C Economic Impact Study that will be uh, taking place, so we're one of the um, pilot locations. So we'll we'll be receiving anonymous cell phone data that will show us sort of where a a trail user went on the trails. Whether they went to the northern after, whether they went stayed at a hotel, how long they were here for. Um, and we'll be able to take, using these sort of measures and and come up with an actual economic impact of what um, the trails bring to our community, so we'll hope, hoping to have that by the fall. I'm prepared for you guys.
And sorry, do, would I have to, to activate that on my phone to participate?
No, it automatically, your phone, it's amazing the amount of data you can get from your phone.
I know.
Yeah, it's pretty scary, actually.
Worried about that.
Yeah, and we also, it's. It's also tied to um, jet like stats on um, income and gender and so all that sort of stuff, so we'll have all that data to be able to make our assessment more powerful.
Counselor.
Worship, big brotherie, um, Mel, I wanted to just backtrack to passes.
Yes.
Cause I, like, the number of passes and the number of users is not even close.
Hmm.
Um, are there?
Are you, I mean, it's not mandatory to buy a pass, right? So it's 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 more like a trail karma that people are doing that to purchase a Trails Pass, um, it helps fund what we do.
Yeah, I was just wondering if if you folks were, I know it's not mandatory, but um, were you working on any strategies to encourage? People to buy passes and then um, is there any sort of, I've never seen like a, I'm not much of a rider, I've.
That's okay.
Got myself an electric bike, so I might make it on trails, yay. Um, but is there any sort of um, visibility locally, like, hey, get a pass, because it helps maintain the trails?
For sure, so at most of the local businesses, we have sort of a little Q R code, um, scanner thing that people can scan and local businesses definitely um, you know, sell. Encourage people to buy Trails Pass and we also have at all of our trailhead kiosks, we have like a Q R code that you can scan. Uh, you can buy a day pass, you can buy an annual pass, um, yeah, so it's it's definitely, I've I've been told that we have too much signage saying to buy a Trails Pass. It's in their in their face too much, but uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think so, yeah. Thank you, and did that answer your question?
Counselor.
Thank you, kind of following in that same vein of thought, I'm curious if you've done any. Consideration as a board or as an organization, much like the Snowmobile Association, has somebody physically sitting at the trailheads to? Encourage, strongly encourage people to bypasses, um, if that's been considered as any of the um. At any of the major trailheads like over a long weekend.
Yeah, and for for sure, thank you, um, Council Hamilton, yeah, we've definitely thought about that and we've had um, like sort of trail tent days. So we've set ourselves up in the park and sort of educating the people in the park on what we do, but yeah, that's a great idea to have that more frequently, yeah, absolutely.
Counselor.
Thanks, Your Worship, uh, it's a kind of a tongue in cheek question here, uh, Mel. Uh, if you, if you close the gap between your operating expense and your revenue and you know, you monetize and. Get to zero, for example, you make as much money as you spend. Would you be coming back to the council still, asking for fifty five thousand dollars?
Um, knowing that we have yearly sustainable funding, takes a lot of the pressure off of our organization, I mean, on a daily basis, I'm applying for. The miniscule grant like the C F K R grant for two thousand dollars or the ready grant for fifteen hundred, I would, I, that would make it. A lot easier and give other not for profit groups the opportunity to apply for those grants. Um, and I think it's something that's, we, the the Trails Alliance brings a lot of funds into the community with our trail network, people come here, spend money, people buy homes here. I feel like it's a, it's a reasonable ask to to have the the city of Ferny support. Um, us as a community partner, just like you do for, you know, the the Commerce Building, the Library, the Ferny Museum and the Art Station, they all receive. Annual yearly funding from from the city of Ferny and I feel like we are just as valid as a community partner as they are. Um.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Nixon.
Uh, are you done?
No, I I I can stop, actually, I don't need to go on anymore.
I I'm just curious about the economic impact, uh, so that's that assessment, do you know if like Sorka and uh, the Golden Group used that to. Procure funds from businesses as well, or is it just for municipality or for government grants and stuff like that?
They they use that mostly to do exactly what I'm doing, they had their economic impact study completed. Um, and they presented that, that was one of their, they had, they were receiving funding, some small funding from uh, their their municipality already. But that just sort of enhanced the funding that they were able to receive based on the numbers that they were showing. So, yeah, but we, I definitely will, when I go out, I, you know, I remember of the of the Chamber of Commerce as a not for profit organization and I've got the list of all the businesses and I will definitely be. Knocking on everybody's door, just like I do every year, I mean, last year at the um, Chamber Awards, Jeff made a lovely speech and um, oh, oh. Jeff made a lovely speech, just sort of saying, saying the impact of the trails have on the community and and how many. Businesses were corporate sponsors and there was only nineteen of them, and there's three hundred and thirty three businesses in Ferny and I I reached out to all of them, so. I'm hoping that, you know, that will also play a role this year, we've come up with a new corporate sponsorship package. Um, but yeah, it's not like, it's not like I'm just sitting around and just want to ask the city of Ferny for funding, we're we're working our butts off and I think we bring value to the community and and yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Counselor Nixon.
Uh, yeah, no, you, I I see how, thank you, Worship, um, I know how hard you work and uh, this is a great presentation. What happens if you guys don't get the money, like what what happens, where are you going to get it from?
So if we don't get the funding from the city of Ferny this year, then then trail maintenance will be cut short this year. I mean, we definitely won't, usually we like to work into, you know, September, October, um, but this year with the reduced grant, that money that we're getting from the Columbia Basin Trust for wage subsidy. Um, I'm going to have to find it from other sources for sure, um, but it'll definitely be reduced. Even even in our strategic planning session, we're sort of anticipating this and our our goal this year is to sort of make make good what we have. Um, keep the stoke going, obviously, from this last season, but I'm not doing as many new builds and 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 things like that, so, yeah.
Counselor, you.
Thanks, Your Worship, Mel, you mentioned your reserves. But if you, like, you're, it sounds like it's difficult to just have money, let alone put money aside. Um, is that just because like societies, you're required to have X in reserves?
Um, I don't know if our society had, we are, our board had made a decision back in, I'm not sure what year, but they had to have a hundred thousand dollars in reserves at all times, so just in case we had to dissolve as an organization, we were able to pay it our staff and. Do all those kinds of things, so we decided that because we received a grant from the Columbia Basin Trust to to have the electric truck, that was an asset. That we could potentially sell if we had to dissolve, so that's why we reduced our um, reserves to fifty thousand dollars, so we were able to dip in last year and dip into those reserves.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, Counselor McIsaac.
Uh, thank you, Worship, um, trying to figure out how to ask this in a delicate fashion.
It's okay, I got big shoulders.
It's not like you.
True enough. It, just in my observa, first of all, A, I want to just want to preface this by saying, I love all the trails around here and I really appreciate all the work that is done, so, starting there. Um, if I think back to ten and fifteen years ago, it really felt that trails in this. that trails in this particular area, in fact, across the province, were getting a lot of attention and from all levels of government and lots of funding consequently. Has that fallen off?
Yes.
So like across the board, is there just less attention to trails?
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's more, I think, I think what's happened now is all of those trail networks use all that funding and they've built all these trails. You can see we've got 370 kilometers of trails. Do we need to build more trails? Can we just keep what we have and make it good and manage what we have? But the thing is, it's easy to get grant funding to build something new, not as easy it was. It is easy, but it's really hard to get funding to maintain what you have. And that's the main ask here is like, we need funding to maintain what we have to the level we had. We used to be a volunteer organization, which we rely on volunteers to maintain our trails. We can't do that anymore. We've moved past that. We're a bigger organization now. We have staff, we have the means to do it and training and we have some of the best trail crew workers in the world. You know, like they're, they're highly valued and, and we need to pay them that way. And, and yeah, so that's why, that's why we're asking.
Follow up from that?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the answer. So I, I guess what I'm wondering is if this is the trend in the long term and that's not, I'm not presupposing any decision by council here. But if that tend, is the long term, is 370 kilometers of trails sustainable?
Yes. I mean, we're managing it right now.
Right.
But then we've had a, a big discussion as an organization, like when is enough?
Right.
Like when is enough trails? So that's definitely the discussion we're having. And that's why we're focusing on trying to be the leader in the province on wildlife recreation conflict, reconciliation, doing those education pieces and making good, better what we have, right? Because landowners are not always going to let us build more and more and more, right? So, yeah, we have, we have our list of sort of our strategic priorities for this year. And we have, I wish I had taken a screenshot of it, but we have like this trail rating matrix. I'm sure Mayor Nick could probably share it with you, but it's basically this giant Excel spreadsheet. That's sort of our wishlist of the new things we want to have. But most of the, most of the spreadsheet is refurbishment of things that we already have and making things better. So we're definitely thinking that way as well, but it costs money to maintain trails, sure.
Well, the trail maker, matrix translates into this amazing work planning tool I was super impressed with because you've, you've got your focus and then you've got a bunch of stuff below the line. Like we may do this at some point, it's always got, it's on everybody's radar. You're not focused on it.
Yeah.
And so you focus on your priorities and I thought it was a great tool.
Great.
Counsel Hamilton and Counsel Ramon.
Thank you. Early in your presentation, you mentioned how much EVR uses the trails in their marketing, how much Tourism Fernie uses the trails in their marketing. And I'm curious how much they're helping to fund the ongoing operation.
So LFL Resources has funded us in the past. Last year, we didn't receive any funding from them, just because it was a transition year between tech and EVR. But we have approached them to provide some, some funding, whether that be purchasing a lot of corporate Trails Passes or, but yeah, we are in discussions with them, whether that's even a, a project area that they would, you know, the EVR trails or however they want to work it, but we are in discussion with them. And what was the other, Tourism Fernie? So Tourism Fernie is a corporate sponsor and they give us $1,000 a year.
Counsel Ramon.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just want to follow up with Counselor Ardia Kelly's question with regards to reserves. Like, why would you buy a depreciating asset like a truck as your?
Why would we buy a depreciating asset?
Yeah.
How are we going to get our trail crew around?
Why couldn't you just buy an old truck instead of an electric vehicle?
Well, we, that was through a grant. So we, we got that electric truck through a Columbia Basin Trust smart grant. So $75,000 of that was paid through, through Columbia Basin Trust and then EVR sponsored the other half of the truck. So the truck is paid for. Yeah, and it was not funding from Trails Passes. It was all funded through grant funding. Yeah, but it's amazing to have it. I mean, it's, we couldn't, we couldn't function without it.
Other questions, comments from council? I've got a, a couple. First, I wanted to kudos on your reconciliation activities. I mean, that's getting nation members out on the land and building those relationships. I think that's excellent. Fernie Trails Alliance is an alliance. Are all the pun, funds pooled?
No.
No?
So I, I'm not exactly sure why we're called the Fernie Trails Alliance. We were established in 2008. So back in the day, I think it was an amalgamation, the Fernie Trails and Ski Touring Society used to be the ones that did it. And then the Fernie Mountain Bike Club and then the Fernie Trails Alliance was established because we started creating all the land use agreements with all of the landowners.
Right.
So currently, right now, we had Stag Leap Fernie Mountain Bike Club and the Fernie Trails and Ski Touring Club as members. But they, Stag Leap is no longer, Fernie Mountain Bike Club is no longer. So there's just the Fernie Trails and Ski Touring Society. And then we have the Fernie Nordic Society and Second Without Age. So they are supporter clubs of us. So we don't direct them, we don't guide them, but we do work closely with them. So our Ben is on the board of the Fernie Trails and Ski Touring Society. And I run the Cycling Without Age, but we don't pool funds. We just communicate with each other and work together closely.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's anything sort of with land use things, we work really closely, especially with the Fernie Nordic Society and the Galloway Lands and their expansion. So we help them with mapping their assets and working with the Rec sites and Trails BC if they want to expand their trails or, or for applications. So that's about all, yeah.
And the, the Economic Impact Study, what's the, I, I'm not suggesting you should have had that in hand before you came to the house, I think. But what's the timeline on that?
Well, we're part of the pilot project and it's going to run until April. And then I think starting in April, they'll have given us all the resources that we need to sort of do that economic impact study yourself. So there'll be surveys done throughout the summer. We'll have people out on the trails, do it following the questions. And then that will all be summarized and then I'm hoping to have it by the fall.
Okay.
Is the plan?
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. And you said you needed a home.
Yeah.
What do you need for a home?
Something that's not a CCAN. Somewhere that we can do maintenance of and storage. Doesn't have to be large, but yeah, it would be amazing to have a base of operations. I mean, right now we're renting some space up on Anderson Road. I mean, it's, it's working, it's, it's fine. But yeah, it would be amazing to have some sort of base of operations.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then just one more question. There's organizations out there and I, I don't know if you've investigated them. And I don't know that they work in this space, but they will take on your Trail Pass sales. Because they use that as an upsell for other services that they provide. And so they will look after the marketing and, and make sure people are aware that, that every dollar spent goes to Trails of Fernie, et cetera, et cetera. And, and have you investigated anything like that?
Like, no, I haven't. I mean, one of the things we've investigated is getting those, it's called tip tap. The Salvation Army sort of uses at Christmas time, but having those like a solar powered one on some of the trailheads so people could tap and donate or having them in local stores. I think Tourism Fernie is hoping to be able to fund that and have that so for local not-for-profits and charitable groups to use at events. So they have those things to, to use. Yeah, cause in discussions with it, but no, I haven't looked into those specific things. Yeah, I'd love to learn about it for sure.
Okay, well, I, I, like I say, I don't know specifically this space, but I know they, they work in other, support other organizations and, and they actually return money to those organizations. Because they're, they have this sort of upsell platform that they work with. But I'll, I'll put you in touch with someone who has some insight.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And thank you for bringing the presentation and the request. You know, we're in budget deliberations, as you know, and.
Hopefully it's good timing.
Oh, Counsel Nixon.
Just one question in regards to that, and it's probably a question for Mr. Burdett. If we were to fully fund the FTA shortfall, then where would we get the extra $55,000?
Thanks, Counsel Nixon. Would be a tax increase, 0.58 of a percent? And is this an appropriate time for me to ask a question that I had or?
Certainly, yeah.
Like my reaction when I read some of this, and I didn't have much time to read it and I haven't talked with Mr. Regalworth and that was a great presentation, by the way. And I do use the trails and I really appreciate them. But you know, I looked in like the Whistler funding of 282,000, 99% of that or 279 comes from MRDT. So I just don't know. And so like my reaction is that that feels a little funny, you know? So that's all I wanted to bring up.
Funny that that MRDT funding isn't applied in the same way here.
Well, I mean, yeah, we don't, the city isn't stewards of that fund, as you know.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, that's all, that was my reaction when I was reading the report.
That was, so thank you, Brent, Director Burdett for that. Sorry, call it by first name. But I did, I did speak with Trevor from, from Whistler about that and just sort of said, how do you, how does MRDT, are you able to get MRDT and we are not able to get MRDT? So I think that their tourist offices are now communicating with each other on that. But I know that all of the other trail organizations, those are, that was all municipal funded. Whistler was the only anomaly where it was RMI and MRDT funding.
Thank you. Further, Counsel Nixon?
Yeah, I just had one last question about that one slide that was city of Kamloops. And it's, they look after 10 kilometers for $120,000. And I just was like, is that paved with gold?
Sorry. Sorry, that one, I should have specified more that they, in Kamloops, they have the Bike Ranch. I don't know if you guys have been there, but it's a massive bike park. So they've got three different paved pump tracks and a whole bunch of features and then these connecting trails, flow trails kind of thing. So that's, that is one of the biggest and most used parks in Kamloops. So yes, it's just a bike park specifically. So, but we also maintain our dirt jump park here in Fernie.
It's not rattlesnake mitigation, is it?
No.
Counsel Ramon.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just want to respond to CFO there, me and Counselor were talking. That was exactly the kind of question that was running in our heads too. So good, good asking that.
Counsel Randy Kelly.
Just to clarify, Mel, as far as you know, Whistler is the only MRDT funded of this list that you've given us.
Yes, I can confirm that because I spoke with all of the, and asked them where their funding came from. And Whistler was the only one that said a combination of MRI and MRDT. Everyone else was municipal funding.
And then Kimberly, no, Kimberly is funding 25.
Kimberly funding, yeah. And Rebel Stoke, which was on the list, is in an ask now.
Counsel Hamilton, did you have?
Yeah, less a question, more just kind of a thought along with what Mr. Burdett was asking and with Tourism Fernie explicitly stating that they're wanting to get more into destination management as opposed to marketing. I'm kind of, I'm challenged as to how they're not supporting this key asset of their marketing opportunities, only $1,000. You know, it's, it is a major driver for all of the, the local economy. I would love to see the city support it at some level, but without the information of what our major employers are doing to actually support it and fund this, because it's driving their business. I'm challenged to see the taxpayer fund it, even though I recognize that taxpayers do benefit from it and, and whatnot. So that, that's just kind of my thoughts at the moment.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think anyone around the table, we've all been in this community long enough to see the difference the trails have made. And you know, we used to have a shoulder season that you could, you know, shoot a cannon down Second Avenue and there was nobody there. And now that shoulder season is so small, if it exists at all, because there's, you know, there's skiers and then there's fat bikers and there's vehicles with all sorts of accoutrement on them. But yeah, people are just, the trails are a huge draw to this community. So, you know, not, won't dwell on, on Counsel Hamilton's comment, but yeah, they're, they're an asset that is, I think, potentially being undervalued in terms of its true economic impact. And, and like others, I'd like to see us as a municipality recognize that. But I think it's got to be a coalition of the willing, if you will, in terms of this is very important to our community. Let's make sure we're supporting it appropriately. Counsel Schusman.
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. For what it's worth, this is one of the best presentations I've seen in quite some time. And we get to see a fair few of these, so kudos there. And just another tip of the hat to you guys. I definitely remember the bad old days before your organization was formed when as a landowning family, it was just a constant battle with people just like doing whatever and taking over your property and being downright hostile. So you guys definitely did a really good job of formalizing things, getting those land use agreements and being good partners. However, I would like to echo Counselor Hamilton's comments there. I think that the correct avenue is probably, I think, pursuing the MRDT on this and, and working with Fernie Tourism. When I look at your ask, and that's a very fair ask and very well thought out. I, I tend to think of what else that money buys us or the taxpayer or what it's worth per household. And it's regrettable that we have so many other serious issues that I feel should take a front seat if I were to spend that money myself personally. But you guys are doing a great job and I certainly would support the city helping you pursue that MRDT or getting tourism on board.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I guess one of the points in the presentation was sort of to elevate our community partner status to be equal with the other community partners, such as the Chamber and those kinds of things. So some sort of formal agreement. I mean, if the $55,000 is too much of an ask, we, you know, we would take less and then work our way up towards that once we have, you know, a better plan in place. But yeah, thank you very much for your time and listening to me and appreciate it. And yeah, we'll see you out on the trails.
Well, I look forward to you being a more formal partner. I think that's, that's absolutely appropriate.
Okay.
Counsel Hamilton.
My question was, you know, what would procedurally, what would be the next steps to help FTA elevate to kind of that's formal level of partnership with the, with the city? Do we need, do we need a motion right now?
No, I don't think so, not in committee. We staff, we would task staff to pursue that to, and I know that Mel has a relationship with our recreation folks. So Counsel Randy Kelly.
Just before we let Mel go, the, the home that you need, is it more related to storage or do you need administrative too?
No, storage only.
Okay, thanks, Mel.
I wasn't sure. Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Hamilton.
And just to clarify, I, I recognize that we're in committee and we, we're not making decisions now. I guess my question was more specifically, do we need to make a motion to have, to bring that back to a regular meeting to task staff? Or can we just do that yourself?
Well, I would, we don't have our CAO here, but I suspect our corporate officer has heard enough to know that, that, that conversation is required from this point. No, not at all. Thank you, Mel.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Oh, please, you, no pressure. You're welcome to, to leave. In fact, we'll probably take a 10 minute recess at this juncture, if that's okay. Whenever you're ready. Welcome back. We'll move on to item seven point one, the twenty twenty four fourth quarter year to date dashboard. And I, I do recognize Counselor Ramadas has to leave a little early, so he may duck out about quarter after. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will try to be done at eight fifteen. Sorry, I'm having some difficulties with the mouse.
Apologize for the delay. Having some technical difficulties. There we are.
All right, here we go. Sorry about that delay. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is your quarterly report for twenty twenty four. So the Q four report. Uh, this is actually the, the summary of, I guess, the, uh, twenty twenty four reporting year. This, um, I have a few slides here, uh, just to accompany your information package. So the quarterly report, this is the third time you've seen it, uh, in the past year. Um, it's kind of a work in progress. Uh, there's four elements that we're reporting on at the moment. Trying to work towards, uh, reporting on performance and not these four sort of distinct areas. You'll see in your information package, there's several, uh, components. The two highlighted in yellow are sort of those wrapped up, uh, dashboards, uh, reporting on the various projects. Uh, and then there's several other lists, uh, and some highlights within the report in terms of priority one projects where projects are having major concerns, challenges or, uh, facing some delays. I've provided within the reports some details on, on where the projects are at and directors are here to speak to them. Should you have any questions? That said, anything that is flagged as a major concern is already on the radar of that particular director and is probably already come forward to you or is forthcoming very soon. Uh, so the, the bulk of the detail is around projects at this point. And we've attached some, uh, key performance indicators as a beginning part of a process. Uh, but I won't really speak to the detail there, but I'm open to having you ask any questions, uh, as well as, uh, the summary of the council resolutions are there, uh, and that's just a work in progress on reporting as well. So I just wanted to quickly touch base, uh, on the reporting approach for the year. There were several strategies, again, trying to work towards it being something that's meaningful for you and for it to be scaled down into the different levels in our organization at the leadership level and at management. And then through to the community in terms of customer performance or experience, for example. Things that we worked on this year were really about centralizing the tracking and reporting of projects. We've been pretty decentralized. Uh, uh, so each department tracks, uh, information in different ways and in different platforms. We don't have a, uh, project portfolio management system or a performance management system that's a tracking metric. So, uh, things are, um, distributed throughout. So, uh, we're just bringing things together to centralize routine, uh, create a consistent, uh, um, process for staff and for council and seeing this information and build on that, uh, as we go. So, um, those are our, some of the strategies just to be mindful of. And some of our challenges that we've, uh, faced obviously in doing this, because it's a new thing and it does extend into all of our organization, like in, in all the departments. And, um, you know, you'll, you'll notice on the list of all of the projects, for example, the scope and the scale is different. And, you know, it's apples to oranges. We've got like a, a good example is installing flagpoles at City Hall versus rolling out an entire curbside organics project. And those are each one in the list. So, uh, something to be, that we're mindful of as we move into, uh, this next year and how, you know, what kind of, um, shifts can we do in terms of getting departments to, to change how they're tracking things?
Counsel Ramadas?
Thank you, worship. You almost read my mind, Director. That's exactly what I was thinking. I think there is a dimension missing that I can't quite say what it is, because that's, that was my first thing. The C and L right of way. And then there is education of our citizens on something. Not saying the second, the latter is not important, but it's just that the criticality of some of these infrastructure projects, weighed against some communication type projects. I, I feel like there is some dimension missing. I don't know what, what exactly it is.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I think as staff, we recognize that as well and sort of looking for ways to wrap it up into something more meaningful. And, uh, some of that, that particular element that you mentioned, uh, is, uh, related to your council strategic plan. And it is more of a strategy. And so as we move mid-year into our check-in for the council strategic plan, um, looking at actually rolling out the, the various, um, indicators that were already identified there, um, will be important.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Director Jansen, because that was, you'll recall from my, our first look at this. I, I wondered about a cover page that would, because this is a, like a whole raft. It's several documents deep in terms of the, the information, but were there five categories we could put on a one pager that would list to, to come, but it, I, Counselor Ramadas has sort of put his finger on the challenge, right? Like what are the current key priority projects? Because we know certain infra, infrastructure projects are critical for this community, but they will have a, they, they have a plan in place as to how they will develop. And so they're not critical tomorrow, if you know what I'm saying. While some will be more critical in the next month or so. So it, and maybe that's the time when we, we revisit our strategic plan as a council to, what do we need to see every quarter at a glance to know we're on the right track? That makes sense.
Absolutely makes sense and, uh, staff are looking for that as well, that, uh, the various reporting, uh, for, for our team. And as we work with our managers, uh, so certainly moving in that direction. And right now, uh, you know, it's a, reporting is a work in progress, particularly in projects. You know, just bringing people together and starting them, uh, have people, uh, use the same definition of a project and, uh, have a scale for what kind of project gets reported over here versus over here. Definitely something that we're looking at. So, I, I mean, obviously, uh, we kind of spoke to all of these different challenges already, just in this one conversation. So, you know, just being mindful that this is, uh, an early part of quarterly reporting journey. And, um, you know, we're still working on developing, uh, that narrative, uh, that will make the most sense to, uh, the different users, council and the community, uh, as well as staff. Uh, we also have some, uh, you know, significant data gaps and access to information, which we're resolving some of that through some of our digital transformation projects. But decentralized reporting and data management being decentralized is definitely a challenge in, in scooping up things and reporting on it appropriately. You know, you'll note in the KPIs, uh, attached to the report. I'm going to pick on, uh, drinking water for a moment. We do have a, a massive amount of data that we report on for drinking water, whether it's boil water advisories, water quality or simply on volume and, uh, you know, liters per day, per capita, for example. But that information isn't as easy to extract into that roll up. And so those are things that we're looking at as we move through our level of service work and, uh, working with those different teams and finding ways that we can bring that into, um, it into sight that isn't a mount, like, isn't a mounted to move.
Counselor McIsaac?
Uh, thank you, worship. I see you're still on the challenges and I'm already looking at your charts. I, I apologize. But, but since we're having the discussion about, you know, page at a glance and all that sort of thing, though, one of the, missing dimensions for me and looking at the information is I find it difficult to know if from here, whether things like, um, business modernization or data gathering. Now, I'm, I'm a computer guy, so I, I appreciate the data gathering side, but I'm not sure that I'm seeing from the information here is the critical path. Like where those parts of our corporate infrastructure, like decentralized data and things like that, are impeding our ability to tackle the other things that appear more critical, like infrastructure projects and so on, right? Are we, where, are we less capable of anticipating or responding to those projects? Because we haven't finished other parts of the corporate business side. So, so as a consequence, because I don't see where that critical path is, I'm not as able to rank them. And so I'm always going to say, well, a pipeline is always more important than a database. And I say that begrudgingly as a computer guy, right? But without seeing that critical path information, like if we don't do this, then we can't do that properly. That would, I think that's an important part of the communication as we sort of get this down to a small, at a glance, what's really important today? Like what should we, we worried about this week and next month and next quarter and so on? So I know I drove, wanted to put my two cents in towards that. Yeah.
Counselor, are you Kelly?
Thanks, your worship. Actually, something you said struck for me, um, like a timeline. Like I, I would, I'm kind of visual that way. It would be nice to see stuff plotted on a timeline of, and maybe that also demonstrates a little bit what's currently critical. And then what, you know, where other major things are, like where, where are we at looking new wells? Where are we with C and L? Where are we with wastewater? I don't know, like.
Yeah, I thi, I think that's sort of all, all part of that same conversation to Counselor McIsaac's point. Like, you know, if it's all on a Gantt chart, you can see where the, the data centralization project will serve these other projects. Director is making a note, but I, 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 yeah, I think that's exactly right. Yeah. Like how do, how do they all sort of fit together? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for the comments. I think I'm going to try to say that back to you to see if I've captured what you're saying. So you're looking for a critical path in terms of the transformation initiatives that are supporting that corporate, those corporate initiatives, those foundation elements for us to be able to leverage that information? Like, are we talking about just the transformation projects? Or are we talking timeline for all projects?
Thank you, worship. I think let me, let me say first, as I was going through the reports and the particular areas and so on, like, I appreciated that there is identification of these are critical and their status. What isn't as obvious is what the interdependencies are. That, that's, that's the missing piece from the information that's in here that I can't tell. So I can't tell that that's going to be a one-one until this other one is done, because we can't move forward on it. So I think that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, and in the alternative, some of them, and, you know, touch wood, God forbid, if we have a critical failure, we will have to advance it regardless of where we're at in terms of these other projects. So, yeah, it's just and that's part of the analysis as well, like how we can't hold this up until we get this transformational project complete, because this needs to advance. Does that make, you see what I'm saying? Like, some will be interdependent, but their criticality will make them independent of any other project, because they just need to get done. Counsel Ramunas?
Just to add to that, your worship, those transformation initiatives or, you know, all the technology stuff that goes on, they're all like enablers, right? Like, they will enable all these different capital projects to move forward in a better fashion, for lack of better term.
Right, yeah.
But you pull it away, you will progress slowly, slowly, but you'll still accomplish that task. But the enabler will kind of accelerate
Yes.
all those works.
I think that's exactly right. Yeah. Director Jansen?
Thank you. That is a good point of clarity, and I get what you're saying here. And so, working with staff on how we can communicate that to you. Certainly, we have a massive Gantt chart of all of these projects. But I will not bring that forward.
Counsel Schussman?
I'll be concise. I don't mind the Gantt chart, perhaps because I haven't overdosed on them, but.
I think, thinking to what that implementation plan for the strategic plan looks like, like in, I'm not sure what you envision, but in my mind, it's, it is very, you know, it shows those steps, the dependencies and how it steps. And then the indicators that we've sort of done some work around identifying what those might be, but we need to move ourselves into actually tracking that in a central way. So I'm looking forward to that conversation as we move into the second part of quarter two.
Yeah, as are we. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't have, I don't want to go through all of these details, but stop me at any point if you want to ask any questions. I'm just flashing up these two dashboards. We've got major projects plus the council strategic plan projects. And there's different multivariate ways that we're looking at it. Again, the data is, you know, apples to oranges in a lot of cases. So we're starting something, but it's not yet overly meaningful. And we recognize that, but it's just about starting a process and improving it over time. So does anybody have any questions specifically about these two dashboards?
Just, and forgive me, it's just an observation, like the major projects dashboard, for example. It doesn't actually list any major projects. It just talks about them in the aggregate.
The dashboard, that's correct. But the in appendix, Steve talks about the completed major projects.
Yeah.
And then the various, but yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an observation, and that's and I think we'll struggle, and we've sort of, some of the questions have indicated in terms of size and priority. What would be the right projects to be looking at today? As Counsel McKaisik put it, next month, next quarter? And have somehow identifying those so that so the council has a sense of these things are moving forward. And this is where they're at, regardless of scope. And maybe it's a criticality thing, maybe it's a dependency thing, as we've discussed. I'm not sure what the the matrix would be where you'd make that decision. I think that's why we have to work through that collectively. Counsel Hamilton?
Yeah, I think to echo your comments, when I looked at this, I was a bit, you know, okay, but what are we working on now? And, you know, I always frame things when I'm trying to map out projects as like now, next, later, so that I can see what I've got to work on today. What, as soon as a couple tasks are done here, this is what's next. And then these are important tasks, but they're later in my, in my work plan. So, yeah, it's just, as far as like an at-a-glance dashboard, it feels, it does feel like it's lacking a little something in terms of my ability to communicate to constituents of, you know, what is staff working on right now? What's happening at the city right now? That sort of stuff. And I think what you said would be good.
Counsel Roddy Kelly?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I just keep reflecting on a couple of the things that you've said. It feels a little bit to me like there's poor critical sort of things and then like strategy things. And there's a disconnect there in terms of, you know, like, what is, what is like, if something absolutely must, like you mentioned about the, you know, if we had to move it forward because it fails. Not articulating it as well, but.
Counsel McKaisik?
Thank you, worship. I think I wanted to clarify what I was thinking too, a little bit on this, because I think having the finger on the pulse of every single project going on isn't actually that important at this table. It's really important in your office. I think the criticality part for me, from a policymaker perspective, is being able to get some sense of what resources might be asked for that haven't been planned for, because there is a critical thing that is happening. What policies council has put in place that are limiting the ability to respond to that and what we could potentially change? You know, I, I certainly appreciate, you know, like Counsel Hamilton said, I certainly appreciate having a good understanding of all the stuff that we are doing at the city. And people do ask me about it. I like being able to give a poignant answer. But from this table perspective, I'm much more interested, when I'm talking about what are the dependencies and those things, I want to know, we're not getting this done because we're short to staff. Right? And is that something that we can, that we can solve? Or we're not getting this done because we made a different choice that we could, you know, our strategic plan is preventing us from moving forward in this particular area, because it has deep, de-prioritized it, for example. So, you know, that, and I realize that's a lot to ask for from this particular report. But I just wanted to make sure that, as much as we're talking about the individual projects and stuff on there, that this is, that's really much more your purview. It's much more important for me as a counselor to understand what we can be doing to enable your ability to solve all those things and how much information do we need to effectively make those changes, right? That's, which is a very tough balance to achieve. So I don't want to see your Gantt chart. I've looked at millions of them, never been that fond of them. But, but I do want to know what's missing there that, like, we as a group can solve the problem for. That's what I'm hope that was clear.
Crystal clear. I'm glad to hear that we are on the same page. We also as staff are looking to create clarity so that you do have policy levers. We recognize that, you know, we have a big business. We deliver a lot of services and it's complex and it's not always that clear. So certainly things that we're also focused on. Thank you.
But it does, this whole conversation points to your comment earlier, Director Jansen, about a revisit of our strategic plan and how this all sort of fits together. Yeah.
That's correct. And, you know, it's, part of this journey is also bringing the organization along, like building our capabilities as an organization and as a team. You know, you'll recall, it's been about a decade since there's been like a council strategic plan that had an implementation plan and that was able to be rolled up and exactly what you're looking for. And so there's some memory loss or amnesia or something here, but we are working hard to do that. It's just when you're facing a list of 115 projects and, you know, measures from all over the place, you know, bringing the people along, the journey is the hardest part.
Understood.
So a couple of highlight, project highlights, I'm not going to go into detail here. Director Heisler is here. The majority of our priority one projects are around our core public services, drinking water and wastewater. There are several projects, the relocation of C and L trunk mains, that's a huge one. You'll recall, you approved a grant, or sorry, some additional funding in December to reassess the car, do a re costing study for that, so that we could be shovel ready, do apply for grants. Engineering Public Works is working on that as we speak and targeting a new grant for that project. Alternative ground source identification, that's an in-progress project. There is no end date at this point, just exploratory and continue work with E V R on that. The wastewater treatment system assessment and the compliance studies. So we've spent the last year doing data collection and now looking through to design for a new location of our outfall. So lots of progress on those two major core service areas. And then as well, working through the core safety certification program and the fire hall replacement, detailed design and construction, as well as the borrowing process. So those are kind of the highlights of the priority one projects. Projects of major concern, so a few highlights here. So those are projects that are experiencing major challenges, requiring change in scope, objectives or budget. So, you know, as I mentioned, the relocation of the C and L trunk mains is on that list as it's targeting external funding for that particular project. Ferry Creek filtration design is another one. That's for our primary drinking water source, Riverside wastewater facility design. This one, we've been looking at a facility, some expansion of our screening units and the building itself can be designed with that. So looking at expanding the facility or rebuild the community center decommissioning and short and long-term options. I believe Director Logan spoke to that last week during budget. So that one there is, you'll have heard, obviously challenged with financially on that front and records management. And just to highlight, childcare and affordable housing was on this list last quarter and has moved off of that as they've received additional funding to execute that project and it's moving forward. And delayed critical projects, a lot of repeat projects here. Highlights of ones that have been moved off of this list are that development approvals process permit tracking software implementation. Still on track for an April rollout of building permits. And then there's the redevelopment of the old fire hall. So again, just touching on outcomes, like it is a reporting journey and kind of a mindset and business shift for the organization. And some of the outcomes that we were looking for and have met for the year in terms of at a staff level, you know, just that improved communication on projects that are underway, that are understanding our collective capacity, increasing awareness, you know, increasing collaboration across teams. And try to get a sense of what everybody is already tracking and how can we bring that all together? So lots of good outcomes, in spite of it being, you know, hard to chew, I suppose. Some of the things that we're looking for moving forward, you know, this isn't something that we're throwing. We've identified any significant change in resourcing for. So we're looking at small approaches to tackle some of these things. So obviously, implement, introducing some element to gauge the scope and scale. You know, going through the council strategic plan touchpoint and looking at that implementation plan more intentionally, not just at a project list. And working with the teams through our level of service project that had been delayed last year due to my leave. And we're kicking that off again and we'll be working through that. And a lot of that involves also documenting technical levels of service and metrics and also that customer side of things. And just introducing more project collaboration tools and some project management training. So you'll see some of the outcomes there that we'll be looking for this year. And we'll report back after 2025. And obviously, open to any direction from council or feedback from council on areas of focus. I've got quite a few notes here for us to have some conversations.
Thank you, Director Jansen. Questions, comments from council? I think we all have, very much appreciate it. I did want to ask one question, and just because of going through the, the depth of data in the report. The filtration exemption at Ferry Creek, what are our chances of success? Do we have a sense of that, Mr. Heisler, in terms of achieving that?
Through to council. Just a quick recap before I answer the question. We were applying for a filtration exemption. Then we backed off that because it seemed like we weren't going to be able to do that. And then after some discussions with the regulator, we were kind of steered towards reapplying that we had a pretty good chance again at getting that. So I feel like our chances are good, but I, you know, I wouldn't put a percentage to it.
Okay, because that was how I actually phrased my, what is our percentage chance of success?
Not going to answer that one.
I would expect it to, but thank you. Thank you, Director Jansen. With that, we don't typically do council reports at community as a whole. We'll move on to item 9.1, resolution to close. And I'll ask our corporate officer the resolution, please, of recommendation.
Yeah, certainly. Staff recommendation that the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to section 91G of the community charter as the subject matter being considered at this time relates to litigation or potential litigation affecting the municipality.
Mover, Counsel Roddy Kelly, seconded by Counsel Schussman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Genonymous, thank you. So we will go into closed and thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening.